Sounded weak. Hey, well, good evening. Today is July 15th, 2024. This is our scheduled second meeting of the month, even though our first meeting was a couple of weeks ago, I guess. Around, we always cancel the July 4th one. For some reason, I thought today was the first meeting, so I showed up at 2:00 and then went back to work after that. It's good to have you all here today. Thank you for coming. Rowan County Commission Meeting. We're grateful to see you. It's the tradition of this board. We start off with a couple of things. We're going to have our chaplain. He's our sheriff chaplain. Chaplain Taylor will make his way up. He's going to do a prayer for us. This is called a solemnizing prayer. If you've never been here before, solemnizing prayer is not for you. It's for us, the commissioners. We've got to make decisions throughout our weeks and months that affect everybody, and we seek wisdom in doing that. And no better place to do that than through a prayer from our chaplain. So after that, we'll have the pledge. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started, okay?
Commissioners, let's pray. What do we come to today? And thanks for this day you bless us with. Thanks for the privilege to be here tonight. We thank for our county commissioners, your Lord, and the preparation they've made for this meeting, Lord, as they always prepare in the work they do. So many times, we don't see what they do, but we know they do an excellent job. We appreciate them. Please give them the wisdom they need tonight as we have this meeting tonight. We place them in your hands tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor, as always. We're down a couple of commissioners today. Mike's on reserve duty and Craig is a little under the weather. So keep those guys in your thoughts this week, please. Got some things to add. Let's see, to the agenda. We've got a special recognition that we'll do at the proper time. We've got a principal expense report has been provided for you. We'll do that as item number II. And then we also have, let's see, Westin Plaza lease authorization. Let me make sure I don't have those switched. All right, I'm sorry. The principal expense report is item HH. And then the Westin Plaza lease authorization is II. Is it okay to add those three items? Have a motion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye. All right. Then having added those things, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And let's see. So then, do we have a motion to approve the consent ida? The consent agenda as we amended it?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have public comment. We have Mr. Bobby Kemp. Bobby, are you here? Bobby, welcome. Good to see you. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon. Some of y'all may remember me. I was here at the February the 5th meeting, and I spoke on seniors, veterans, and disabled. And I wanted to come back today and follow up on a few things with you because I was really disappointed at the outcome of that meeting. I know that Commissioner Hibbs, you and I talked on the phone one night. You'd asked me for that phone number that day, and I gave you my phone number. And you called me, and we talked on the phone for one night. And you explained a lot of things to me. It was very interesting. But I was under the impression that you was going to speak with the, you'd already spoken with a couple of commissioners, and you're smoking with the county attorney and was looking to see legally and financially what could be done. About two months went by, and I hadn't heard anything. And I called you one day. And at that particular time, you'd had a busy day, and you didn't remember who I was. And that was disappointing to me. I'll be honest with you. But today, I want to come back and talk about a few things. And, you know, here lately, there's been a whole lot of conversation about our school system. Money needed to take care of our schools. And I'll be honest with you. I'll be at the front of the line to take care of our schools and our kids and to help them. But we spend the money for the schools, and we pay our teachers good money, incentives and, you know, bonuses and take care of their health insurance and things of that nature, just so we can take good care of our children. But, you know, eventually, those kids graduate out of school. Then what? Then what happens? Some of them go on for more education, maybe at Rowan Tech. Some of them may go to Carolina or Duke, get some more education. But then what? Then what happens? Ninety-some percent of them, my statistics, they actually wind up getting married. And that's the thing to do, to get married and have a family, start a home. And, you know, when that takes place and starting at home, then that's when they start paying taxes, when they go out on their own. But then what happens? They work their jobs. They try to pay their bills. They take care of their children. They try to support them, and they act. Some of them actually are active in the community. But then what happens? Well, eventually, they get old, just like I am. They worked hard. They tried to make it. Like I told you before, veterans, seniors, and the disabled, I'm one of all three of those. And I don't have to tell anybody in this room how hard times are right now. Just trying to make ends meet, to pay your bills, to buy groceries. Everything we do, it seems like it's just ridiculous on the prices we had to pay. I made some notes today I want to cover with you. And I know I don't have long. But before when we talked about, I talked to you about my taxes. My home taxes are $1,300, excuse me, $1,194.06. I pay Boston Heights Fire Department $185.29. My personal properties, you got them valued at $37,000. That cost me another $215.79. And then another $33.49 for Boston Heights Fire Department. Then I've got a car. I've got a car that's valued $8,890. And that car, I have to pay $51.56 taxes, $8.00 Rowan County taxes, and a registration fee for $46.25. Just last week, I had to go get the tag for the car. And by the time I did all that, that cost me $105.81. And that's not counting the inspection fee that I had to pay. It's just money that we're spending and spending and spending. And I've had a truck. Now, the two vehicles I've got, they're not new. They're both 2015 models. My truck, my county taxes, $87.78. I pay Boston Heights Fire Department another $12.02. And then the registration fee on my truck is $67.25. Come time to renew my tag for my truck, it's $167.25. I don't have that kind of money. I don't know about everybody else. I just cannot, can't afford to do that. And like I say, all this money that we're paying, where does this money come from that we paying our taxes now? I told you before, I remember the time, we didn't have these kind of expenses. The fire department was taking care of, by the county money when we pay our personal taxes and our home taxes, that is. We paid our taxes. I remember a time walking right over here at the tag office and paying $15 to $20 for a tag and leaving. Our vehicles, we don't, we don't need to have an inspection fee on them every year. Vehicles aren't made like they were 50 and 60 years ago. That's just money that we're spending that I do not have. And we got to do something about it. The people need help. I need help. Our young people, the ones I'm talking about that are getting married, one day, they're going to be right where I'm at. Money that I worked and I set back, I told you before, at 58 years old, cancer came into my life, and I have seen it very hard. All the money I had put back is gone. And I keep getting bills, getting bills from the county to pay taxes. I've always worked hard. I've always paid my debt. Now, we've got to have some kind of, some kind of help. And we got property taxes. We got sales tax. We pay a lot of tax money on our gas. We pay tax on our phone. We pay tax on cable. We pay tax, self-tax when we go out and we buy something. I pay self-tax on my vehicles when I bought them. Why am I still paying self-tax? I do not understand that. It seems like they just keep digging more and more out of our pockets. And you know, Rowan County used to be textile capital. We had Mills galore. Now, you know what we've got now? It's turned into a wirehouse county. And I don't blame you for bringing in jobs. Commissioner, you told me that if a man didn't have a job in Rowan County, it was his own fault. One day, all these, all these big acres of land that were tearing down, somebody going to get hungry, and somebody going to be tearing some stuff down, planting food. We're going to have to have something to eat because things, Rowan County needs to go on a diet. We big enough now. But we've got to have some help. I'm telling you, you've got to come up with a program. And that's, that's me talking. You've got to come up with a program to help your seniors, your veterans, and your disabled. The young people's going to be there one day. Now, some of y'all may have big bank accounts. I don't know nothing about any of that. But I personally, I struggle. And it's not right to live your life like this. I'm 70 years old now. And you've got to struggle. It's not right. I've been on my own since I was 16 years old. Nobody's never signed for me to buy a car, buy a home, or get along. I have worked, and I have made it. Now, what I made is gone. You folks were voted in to help us. We need your help. I was, I was reading in our constitution, as a matter of fact, today, in section seven, it says, "All bills for raising revenue shall be originated from the House of Representatives." Does all the bills that we get here paying taxes, that come from the House of Representatives? I don't, I don't know. You people can make some changes. I, we can't, Rowan County can't do it on our own. But our commissioners, y'all got some power. I don't have no power. I'm just one voice telling you my opinion on how I feel. We've got to have some help. Taxes has to go away. We don't need all them taxes. I know we have to build schools, but why? Why do we have to keep building schools? We've got a lot of people now that homeschool their children. Every time that we bring in more business, we've got to have more rescue vehicles. We've got to have more people in the fire department, the police department. We've got to have more vehicles. I just seen the budget where it was $158,000 allotted, take on one officer and a car and salary and things like that. That's fine if that's what we need. But do we need that? If you're going to, if you're going to add more money to it, the $10 million y'all added in on the budget, if you're going to come up with it. Now, I'm going to tell you something else y'all did to us. You pulled a quick one on us. I'm just, I'm just here calling out the way I see it. You cut our property taxes, and then you turned around and went up on our property value and made us pay more money than what we was paying for you cut our taxes. That's like putting money in this hand and wanting twice as much out of this one. That ain't right. You didn't help us none doing that. I can't afford this stuff. Y'all need to stand up and help us. I'm serious. I mean, I'm not mad at nobody. This, this situation's here. But we got to do something about it. We can't go on like this. And I'm not the only one. I've talked to a lot of people throughout the county and places I go and people that I meet and people that I know. And just yesterday, excuse me, yeah. Yesterday, I talked with a man. I've known him for a long time. And I asked him about coming to the meeting with me tonight. He said, "There's not no use." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "They're not going to do nothing." I said, "Why not?" He said, "Well," he said, "when I got my tax bill," he said, "I went to the tax office, and he said, 'I asked for help, and they told me there was none there.'" You either have to pay it. If I don't pay taxes on my home, you know what's going to happen? After about three months, you're going to take it away from me and put it up for an auction and sell it. People don't work all their lives to get treated that way. I don't. One other thing I want to read you here, and I'm going to be quiet and I'll go away. I promise you. Excuse me, just one second. Let me get back to the page I want. The amendment, the 16th amendment, says, "No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States." Everybody in this room is probably a citizen. "Nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws." I'm going to tell you, if things get worse in my life, according to what I just read, the law is supposed to protect me too. If you send them to get my home, send them to protect me. I'm serious. Last time I was here, I asked you, and I like to hear a response back from each and one of you on how you felt about what I said and whether you could help or not. I heard from two. I heard from two people. Don't y'all care? It's time to do something, folks. I'm serious. Does anybody here in this room feel the same way I do if you do stand up? I'm not the only one. I appreciate y'all listening to me. But I'm serious in what I'm telling you. If I, I'll do whatever I can, whatever it takes. If I need to go public, I need to do something, I'm going to do whatever I can. I'm just an old man. I got grandkids. I got 19 grandkids. There are one of them young people one day could be facing the struggle that I'm going through right now. Now, y'all are our first line of defense. Help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Next, we have Gilbert Painter. Mr. Painter, thank you for being with us.
Hey there. I can't speak as good as my brother there. I'm not one of the mortars. I can't talk like he can. But what I'd like to share with you tonight is the experiences and the issues that my family and myself have been experiencing through taxes. My property taxes went up from $806 to $1,816. That's more than double. More than double. I don't know if y'all confused or not. But we ain't the Cartwrights. We're the Painters. And we ain't living on the Palm de Rosa. We're living on the Painter Rosa. There ain't no big, fine cars there. It's just a nice little home. We worked hard all our life. My mom and daddy taught us to work hard, save our money, respect our neighbors, help our neighbors, and just try to be good. That's what we've done all our life. I've worked, I've worked all my life. I've been planning on retiring. But from these property taxes, see, that, that there is. And when I retire, I'm looking to get a little over $1,800 a month. $1,800. 12 months. But now, really, that's 11 months. Because y'all fixing to take out $1,868 every year from my retirement. But really, I'm only getting paid 11 months right there. That ain't counting all the other taxes like my brother just talked about. And they're very real for everybody. Now, it's been brought to my attention about wasteful spending. It's been brought to my attention that there's, there was a battered women's facility that was purchased and in operation. But I think it was said that there's a big, big glass window in the front of it. And the people in there, the women, are insecure. They want their privacy. They don't want people just walking up and down to see them. I wouldn't either. I'd want my privacy. But I forget how many thousands of dollars they wanted to do, to spend, to take that window out and put up a big wall. And I'm thinking, I could carry you down here, right down here to the Walmart and get a pair of curtains for under $100. My wife, she's a good interior decorator. She can pick you out some pretty colors and everything. And I'll come up there with the hammer and the screwdriver, whatever we need, and hang them up for you. No charge. But why would you spend that kind of money on something when all you need is a set of blinds or curtains? That's crazy. That's wasting money. That's money that don't have to be spent like that. Here's another thing that's been brought to my attention. The fire department went to, I think it was Gary's Barbecue out there in Landis. And the way I understand it, that truck had turned over, they was leaving, go back to the fire station, and caused a bunch of damage to that fire truck. And don't get me wrong. I am 100% for our fire department and for our police department. I love every one of them, and I support every one of them. But why was that fire wagon being used for a lunch wagon? Why can't they have their lunches brought to them or bring their own lunches? And I mean, hey, I've seen these fire, I watched the emergency on TV, and they got their own kitchen, and they cook their food. Them fire fellers take their time, and they fix their food, taking turns fixing the food. That, that, fire engine should not have been used for that. It's not designed for that. That's not what it's made for. But I, I'm like my brother yonder. These types of increases on taxes ain't helping nobody. Why is it that every time something needs to be done, you got to go up on the taxes? Why can't we cut taxes? Why can't we get rid of things that we don't truly need? Like wasting that money I was just talking about? That's wasting money. We don't do our money like that at the house. Now, I mean, if you had to pull that out of your own pocket, I bet you'd have something to say about it. It's, it's, it's easy to spend other people's money. It's easy to do that. But I'll tell you something. If we was to put the center of our governing in Jesus Christ, if we would put Him first and let Him show us how to be governed, we wouldn't have all these problems. And that's why I think it's going on. I'm thinking that Jesus ain't in the equation. I'm thinking He's totally left out. I'm thinking that's why we're having all these troubles, because nobody wants to put Him first. Who are they putting first? Lobbyists? Big shots? I don't know. But you work for us. We don't work for you. We elected y'all to help us. I'm, I'm thinking about not retiring now. Because when I, when I retire, I'm going to have to pay those taxes, just like the brother said. If we don't keep our property taxes paid, you're going to be coming out of our house. Something we worked for all our life.
All right, Mr. Painter. Thank you. Appreciate your time. All right. We had two folks signed up. We'll move on to our special recognition.
Theo.
Okay. Harry Osborn coming up here for this? I know who's running this show.
He's always, he's always running.
Yeah.
Truly is an honor after working with youth for so many years and then with the projects with the chamber and things of that nature. You know, over the years, I've had great respect for a lot of politicians and who have done so much for us, and especially great respect for those who have done so much for youth. I think every time I have called on our current congressman, Dan Bishop, and Garrett Hamilton, who works with him, the times I have called on them to do anything for our youth, he has made himself available. And because of the issues of Saturday and the events changed, because he had every intention of being here tonight. But Garrett is with us tonight. But you know, there's a great quote that I will always admire. And tonight, I'm going to put Emma Clark's name to that. "Some see things as they are and say, 'Why?'" Emma Clark dreams things that never were and say, "Why not?" She says, "Why not?" She not only chases her dreams, she achieves dream after dream. And at that point, once she achieves those, you know, it's greater acclaim. She doesn't get in her comfort zone. She sets more dreams for herself and goes after them. There's probably, if you, I hope you had the opportunity to see the congressman award her one of the greatest awards that can be granted to anyone, put her name in the congressional record, read all about her talents on the floor of Congress. Flag flew over Capitol to honor her. And you know what? It's so well deserved. You know, her athletic acclaim is, you know, nobody can touch it hardly. You know, now being the North Carolina female athlete of the year. And then the respect that not only her, her great family, the love and respect that they had for her, the love and respect that her teammates had for, the love and respect that everyone, everyone has had for her. And the congressman did such an excellent job of highlighting those things with all the things in terms of her athletic prowess. And so, all of us here tonight, thank you. You have made, you have become a legacy in Rowan County, and you have brought Rowan to some great acclaim, and we are so appreciative. And for all those who are here tonight in her honor, we thank you for being here. I thank all of our county commissioners for being here and allowing us to do this tonight and all the staffers. And at this time, I'd like to call on a couple people to come forward and do this wonderful presentation to her. Garrett, if you would, who works for the congressman, has done an outstanding job. And also, at the request of that fine, outstanding young lady, she wants a very popular man in her, to her acclaim, her grandfather to come and present that flag to her. And Garrett is now going to read the letter that the congressman sent to her.
In the congressional record, yes, sir.
Garrett, why don't you come up here?
All right. Hello. Every year since 1985, the North Carolina High School Athletics Association awards the Pat Best Memorial Award to the top performing male and female athletes in North Carolina. Ms. Clark is the first female athlete from Rowan County to receive this honor. During her time at West Rowan High School, Emma played volleyball, basketball, and softball. Emma finished her high school career with 43 home runs, 154 RBIs, was named All-State in '22 and '23, and holds the Rowan County record for the most home runs in both a single season and a career. Also a state champ, too, right? If that wasn't enough, Emma dominated on the basketball court, earning also Piedmont Conference and all Rowan County honors while helping her team to a 31-0 record in a state championship. Let's skip ahead, sorry. She kept off her career by earning Most Outstanding Player honors for her performance in the 3A State Championship game. Emma now heads to the University of Tennessee to continue her softball career. While I know that she will excel, congratulations, Emma, and may God bless you in your future endeavors. Sorry. We flew this flag over the Capitol June 19th as a request from Dan Bishop to honor your special achievements. To make it even more special, we mixed it up. We asked who you would want most to give it to you. We asked who you would want most to give it to you. And it's not just the Commissioner, it's your grandfather, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, uh, take a moment, I'd like to introduce her parents, Mr. Ken Clark, my son-in-law, my daughter, Elizabeth Green Clark, and Emma's little sister, Anniston Clark. Glad you're here. And, um, we, um, anybody else over there? We're, 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 uh, but we're glad to have you folks here tonight. And, uh, I believe Greg has another presentation he'd like to do at this point in time. Uh, if I can't make it through all of this, I wanna thank you before I get mixed up here. Uh, he is the one who instigated all of this tonight. And, um, and we, we thank you. The whole family thanks you.
Absolutely.
For what, uh, for what you did at this.
Honor.
And along with this, the County Commissioners would like to make, um, and I'll do this in the form of a motion. Uh, this proclamation has to be done that way, but this is honoring the athlete of the year, Emma Clark. Whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize Emma Clark as an outstanding, multi-discipline athlete in Rowan County. And whereas Ms. Clark plays volleyball and was named All-State her junior and senior years and was named the Rowan County South Piedmont Three A Conference Player of the Year. And whereas in basketball, in her basketball career, Ms. Clark was named All-South Piedmont Conference, All-Rowan County, and was a member of the two-time Three A North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Championship Team, where she earned the sportsmanship award two consecutive years and was the West, that's the division, Most Outstanding Player Award in twenty twenty-four. And whereas in softball, Ms. Clark was named All-State in twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three and holds a single-season and career homerun record for Rowan County and will continue her softball career at the University of Tennessee. And whereas Ms. Clark is back-to-back recipients of the Rowan County Female Athlete of the Year and was awarded the Tracy Connor Award. And whereas Ms. Clark was awarded the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four North Carolina High School Athletic Association Pat Best Memorial Female Athlete of the Year. And whereas the NCHSSAA has announced male and female athlete of the year awards since the nineteen eighty-five to eight, through nineteen eighty-six school year. And Ms. Clark is the first Rowan County female recipient and the second recipient of the award from Rowan County. Which means there was one guy who won this, but this is, she was the first female. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby congratulate Emma Clark for her outstanding high school athletic career and her dedic- her dedication to sportsmanship, making her a role model for the citizens and athlete and sports fans in Rowan County. This is the fifteenth day of July, two thousand twenty-four. I did not introduce Mr. Bryce Knox, who is a great friend of our family. I'm sorry, Bryce. He's one of the.
Well, it's always great to celebrate good news and, uh, good families and congratulations to Vice Chairman Green. And I know you're just, uh, exploding with pride and as well you should be. So we're really proud of her. We've got a, a great tradition of, um, young men and women excelling here. I was, uh, coming north on eighty-five last night and reminded about our two-time World Series champion young ladies and they're traveling again here soon to Georgia. They've won the state championship again. And they'll be traveling and I think if they get through this round, they go to the World Series again. So here we go again. Uh, and then unless you've been living under a rock, our own Vance Honeycutt from Salisbury was drafted in the first round last night by the Baltimore Orioles. I was holding out for the Red Sox, um, or the Braves. Uh, if he'd gone two more spots, uh, Braves might have got him, but, man, he's, he's excited. In fact, Baltimore's, uh, number one in their division now. So it's a great, great team, it's a great, uh, family, Vance is a great kid. And it's just exciting to see what's happening here in Rowan County, uh, with our youth, so.
We had, we had one more young man that was drafted today.
Oh, really?
Yep. Hightower, Cobb Hightower was, was drafted.
Who did he get drafted by? Padres, gotcha. Very good. Well, very good. Um, you made a motion, I'd like you to second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Very good. All right, let's move on. Um, item three, Aaron. Uh, there he is, right in the middle. Aaron. Quasi judicial hearing for SUP O three dash two four. You got a speech for me? Okay. One of these things your taxes goes to is, is, uh, process. Got a, uh, by law have to read this speech. The hearing for consideration of SUP O three dash two four is now in session. Focus on an application submitted by Mark Derosco to build a residential storage facility on tax parcel six one two two five eight located at the two hundred block of Main Sail Road. If you feel that any member of the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. Uh, the board may render, uh, one of the following three decisions to approve the permit as requested or with additional con- conditions. Two, to continue the request, or three, deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible. Aaron, um, welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Aaron Poplin, four oh two North Main Street, Salisbury. This is a quasi judicial hearing for SUP O three twenty-four. A request from Mark Derosco. Uh, the location is the two hundred block of Main Sail Road, tax parcel six one two two five eight. So this is located in Anchor Downs, it's an RS-owned subdivision. The parcel itself is a point four seven acre lot and they're looking to put a one thousand forty square foot residential storage facility out there. So it's just a building for personal storage. It's a little bit bigger than what they could build by right. By right, you can do three percent of the lot size, which gets you at about six hundred square feet. So the applicant was wanting to go a little bit bigger here, so they've had to get a, request a special use permit. So with the special use permit, there are six specific requirements with it. And that's that the parcel's in fee simple ownership, which it is. That the maximum building size is three thousand square feet. They're requesting one thousand forty. That there's no outdoor storage allowed except for specifically provided. There's none proposed. The minimum lot size shall be the same as a single-family dwelling. This is just over that minimum at point four seven acres, first point four six acres. The storage vehicle shall not be in the front yard. There's none proposed. Outside lighting is designed to prevent glare in adjoining residences. There's none proposed. And the setbacks shall be at minimum the same as a single-family dwelling. And they do meet those setbacks. There were responses to the six special use criteria in your packet. And if you have any questions about those, we could go over them individually. And then procedurally, we're looking at conducting a quasi judicial hearing, adopting three separate motions for findings effect. Uh, you've been provided with an example finding today. And then approve, a motion to approve, deny, or table the request. Now, one thing I will go over is one of the findings is on property values. Uh, it was unable to get into your packet. It was unable to get into your packet in time for this meeting, so I provided, but the owner got a real estate agent to take a look at the property and then provide a letter attesting that the property values would not be injured from this request. All right, that's it.
Any questions for Aaron?
I just have one, Aaron.
Mm-hmm.
First of all, thank you, um, Mr. Deroscos?
Yes.
For, for doing this, I think that the Realtor makes a very good point in that you're, um, making an investment to keep your neighborhood looking wonderful by, uh, you know, having, having backyard storage. But number two, my question, Aaron, is that, um, as a conditional use permit, should this property change hands? And if the new owner were to try and do run, say, a commercial enterprise out of that, does the county have the ability to go in and stop that commercial use in the future?
If somebody tried to run a business out of that property, it's not zoned for that and we would have them in zoning violation.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we just spoke about property values. Uh, and we had property values to come up earlier in, in this meeting. And property values that we use are required to have a reevaluation every four years. So this is not something that we do to increase taxes. This is something that happens, uh, the state requires it and we, County Commissioners, are just a division of the state and we have to go by the laws and regulations that they give us. So I just, uh, property values are very important to everybody and I just wanted, uh, the public to understand, uh, how this is handled by the county and why, from time to time, property values will be, um, will be reevaluated.
I don't have anything, um, so Aaron, if you'd just stand by, uh, with the applicant, do you have anything you'd like to add? Yeah, come, come on forward.
Um, yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I'm sorry, I just want to introduce myself, uh, the, the property and I, and I appreciate the, um, discussion about taxes. I would fully expect the taxes on a piece of property with a building is gonna be more than we currently pay on that piece of land. So, um, but in, in the end, this is, uh, uh, really, we, we have pleasure of watercraft. Um, and, uh, lots of grandkids that enjoy it, but in the wintertime, it doesn't need to be sitting around in yards and things like that. I think, uh, in the end, it will help our, our neighborhood and certainly protect the value of our, of our assets. And, uh, we look to do it in a very tasteful way that will hardly be seen from the road. It's a wooded area, but, um, that's really what we're here to ask for and get the consideration.
That, that lot's not part of the subdivision, is it?
That is not, that's on the Rowan County side, but, um, we do own, uh, that piece of land, uh, along with some land adjacent to it that is a piece from my home and two others, uh, septic get pumped to. So it's, it's kind of out of the way.
We know, Mark, this is, uh, this is our subdivision and it's very common. Uh, what they're doing, um, as you're along the lake, that is the subdivision, but across the street from your home is not part of our subdivision. And so it's part of the county. And so a lot of folks own lots, either have septic on or they'll have storage buildings and this is what they're doing. And I haven't had anyone complain either inside the community or out, so.
The sign's been up for a while, so.
Yeah. Just as long as I can store my boat there, we'll be fine.
Well, we'll have to talk. Now I have to, I got a bigger square footage.
This will be played. I'm not storing my boat at his place. Uh, that won't happen. All right, um, you can go ahead and, and sit, Mark. We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna open the floor. Uh, if anyone has anything they'd like to talk about in this, bring it up. For or against, that would be a good time. All right. Seeing none, then we'll close the hearing and we have some, um, items that we'll need to do, we'll do one at a time and she'll make, make these in the form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve SUP O three dash two four and the findings of fact are, number one, the development of the property in accordance with the proposed conditions will not marginally endanger or materially endanger the public health or safety. Fact, this request complies with all seven specific requirements identified in section twenty-one dash five six, parent ten, parent four residential storage facilities. Fact, the proposed structure is subject to compliance with applicable building code standards.
Um, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Finding number two, that the development of the property in accordance with the proposed conditions will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or that the development is a public necessity and, fact, no material evidence was presented suggesting this request would injure property value. I make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Mr. Chairman, I move fact, or item number three, that the location and character of the development in accordance with the proposed conditions will be in general harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with any adopted county plans. Fact, the proposed building will be made of similar materials to other storage buildings in the county.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then do we have, um, aye? Do we have a motion to approve SUP O three dash two four? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Aaron. Aaron, you're back up. Uh, Dragon Boat Festival.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's that time of year again, uh, P E O two twenty-four. A permit to exceed request from the Chamber of Commerce for the annual Dragon Boat Festival. So with a permit to exceed, there are ten specific criteria to look at with approving and we'll go through those pretty quickly here. So the first one is the timeliness of the application. We got the application on June twenty-first, which is well in advance of today's consideration. The second one is the nature of the requested activity. This event is a, I got the wrong one here. Let's skip ahead on this. There we go. This event is a lakeside festival with races, games, and food vendors. Number three is the previous experience with the applicant. This is the tenth annual Dragon Boat. This is the 10th Annual Dragon Boat Festival, so we've got a lot of experience with them. And in the 10 years, we haven't had any issues with it. Number four is the time of the event. The event is planned for Saturday, July 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number five is other activities in the vicinity, or none to our knowledge. The frequency of the event, this is an annual event. The cultural or social benefits of the proposed event. The applicant expects to attract about 3,500 people in hopes of raising money for Rowan County Chamber of Commerce small business program. Number eight is the activity on adjacent residential areas. The, it's just on that cove there near the shrine club. Number nine is previous violations by the applicant, we don't have any. And then number 10 was that adjoining property owners were notified within 72 hours of the meeting, and notice was mailed out on July 1st. Based on those 10 criteria, staff doesn't have any issues with approving the request.
Do we need a hearing?
You can, you just need to approve or deny the request, but you can open up the public comment if you wish.
Anyone want to speak about the Dragon Boat Festival? No, not you. If you'd like to, yes, you may. Please, we're begging you to speak about the Dragon.
You know how shy I am. Elaine Spalding, President of the Rowan Chamber, I just wanted to extend an invitation to our elected officials and our citizens here in the audience to join us for, as Aaron already said, the 10th Annual Rowan Chamber Dragon Boat Festival. It is a wonderful team building exercise. We have teams coming from outside the community to stay in our hotels and buy food in our restaurants and shop in our local businesses. And then, of course, all of the local company teams just really tell us it's an excellent team building exercise. So we would appreciate your support for the noise permit approval. And I just wanted to pass around some flyers if that was okay.
Anyone else? All right, if you have not been to this event, you have missed it. It is, you will not believe it when you go out there, there's so many people, it's well run. It's a well-oiled machine now, it's a lot of fun, a lot of camaraderie. It's just a great event, so please come out and join. This will be the first year, I won't be able to go. We've got a family wedding that we have to go to in Georgia that day, so we are honestly very sad to miss it. Just walking around and seeing folks is part of the fun, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I can't believe that it started the year we got elected, so we've been getting old here along the tooth 10 years.
Older than others, so. We always gotta do that, I know. All right, I know, I know, here it comes. All right, very good, thank you all for being here, and thank you for the event that you put on, it's a great community event. And one of the best things is it helps folks discover the gem of High Rock Lake, and it truly is. So do we have a motion to approve this? In a second? All in favor, say aye? All right, who's up, Aaron again? All right?
Right. We have our second permit to exceed this evening. This is a PE 0324, a request from the High Rock Lake Association for a permit to exceed for their summer concert series. They're looking to do three concerts out on the lake with three separate concert dates. To kind of do some concerts over the sea, over the summer. So this request, we have, the concerts are all three out on the lake. The first one here is off a pier, off a Deer Lake Run, proposed for the, proposed for the 28th of this month. The second concert is proposed for August 18th, out at Goat Island. And then the third concert is proposed for September 8th, over at the Waters Edge Restaurant. And this one would have both seating on land and be able to be viewed by the lake. So as is the last one, there are 10 criteria to look at when doing a permit to exceed. So the first one is the timeliness of the application. We got this one in on June 21st, which is well in advance of today's hearing. The nature of the activity, this event is a concert series with live music on High Rock Lake. Number three, the previous experience with the applicant. The organizers of this event are also the same organizers who did the Float the Goat for the last couple of years. So we've had experience with them, and they've been pretty positive. The fourth is the timing of the event, so we have the three dates listed as well. But along those dates, we also have rain makeup dates for the second concert of August 17th, August 24th, and August 25th. And then for the third concert, there's a rain makeup date on September 7th. And the other findings, the fifth finding is other activities, and the other activities during the same time, there's none to our knowledge. The frequency of the event, this is proposed for this year. We may see more concerts come in the future, but that's what they're looking at today. The cultural or social benefit, the applicant expects to attract about 500 people per concert, so they can enjoy some music out on the lake. Eight is the effect of the activity on adjoining residential property. All the highlighted in red are the people who received notice for this. But the people who'd be affected would be anybody close to the lake. Then previous violations with the applicant, we don't have any. And then adjoining property owners getting noticed, all the lots highlighted in red are who received notice, and they received that on July 1st.
Right, any questions for Aaron? If you guys are familiar with the lake at all, or if you've ever gone to Go Burrito or Waters Edge, there's a transplant from Seattle named Mikey Wetzel. And Mikey put together Float the Goat a few years ago, it's literally a floating stage. It's tied off to Goat Island, and folks come out and tie up on a Sunday afternoon and hear a band play off of this floating dock. And it's been real successful, no complaints, they have wildlife officers are out there, the sheriff, I've contacted, he'll be out there in their new boat. And also, let's see, who else? Wildlife, sheriff, another organism, yeah, Miller's Ferry, Miller's Ferry will be out there as well. So it's, it's well patrolled, if there's any emergency, medical emergency, we've got folks that are there for that. Frankly, I went to Mikey last year, or earlier this year, and said, hey, you've been doing all this yourself. Just as an individual, I asked him if he'd like some help, and so we came up with doing three concerts this year instead of just on one, and so we're excited about that. Folks that live on the lake love to socialize and have events like this, even folks that don't live on the lake. And so there'll be three concerts, the first is coming up in a couple of weeks. It's a really great Eagles tribute band called On the Border. They've got quite a big following, and I've seen them four or five times now, and they're really, really good. So we'll have that one on the, on the July 28th. The second one is another Float the Goat, and the third one, there's a field that's next to Waters Edge. And so there'll be a stage out there, and folks, land lovers, can come and bring a chair and sit out there along with the folks that are in the water. So we are grateful to High Rock Lake Association, because Mikey and Greg can't host this. It really needed for a host to step up. And Lee Snow from Snow Benefits Group is the president of High Rock Lake Association. Lee does a tremendous amount of work on issues surrounding High Rock Lake. He grew up on the lake, his dad is a former president of High Rock Lake Association. So through the years, as the lake is crafted and policy around the lake is crafted, High Rock Lake Association is always in the middle of that on behalf of not only the lake, but lake owners and lakegoers. And so they play a really important role in the development of the lake. And so High Rock Lake Association said, hey, it's a good positive event, we like to be tied to it, and we'd like to host it. So they're very gracious to do that, and so I appreciate Lee being here today. So as always, we try things and see how they go. Float the Goat has gone really well, and so we're gonna add a couple more and see how that goes, and just have some days of enjoyment. So again, we'll open up the floor, if anyone has anything to say, be happy to hear from you. If not, then we would entertain a motion to approve.
The Eagles, is that a, is that a country western band?
No, it's not.
I think it's rock and roll. Mr. Chairman, now make that motion that we approve.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye, aye? Any opposed, thank you very much. Lee, thanks for being here, and thanks for what you do. I can't understate the importance of that association as, as policy is crafted across the Lake District. All right, we'll move on, FSW 02-24.
All right, this last thing I got for y'all tonight, it says Family Subdivision Waiver 0224. The owner is Marty Wall, the applicants are Marty and Kimberly Wall. It's a property at 2818 Old Union Church Road, parcel 607010. So the background on this is that Marty Wall is looking to do a family subdivision to subdivide this lot here to his niece. A family subdivision has to go to an immediate family member, so that's either your children, grandchildren, siblings, or parents. A niece is not one of the, is not included in that definition of immediate family member. So they're requesting a waiver to that definition, so that they could deed off this lot to their niece. So when looking at a family subdivision waiver, we look at some criteria. The nature of the proposed division, it's a family subdivision resulting in one new parcel for a total of two. The existing use of land in the vicinity, this is surrounded by residential and agriculture uses. Then the number of people who reside or work on the property. Each lot will be deeded as followed. Lot one would go to Kimberly Wall, and the residual will stay with Marty Wall. And the last thing we look at is the effect of traffic in the vicinity. There's no NCDOT traffic counts near that section of Old Union Church Road, but it's got a capacity of 13,600 vehicles a day, and staff doesn't anticipate the addition of one new lot to affect traffic. So just a couple of comments, this is just requesting waiver of the definition of immediate family member, so that a new lot can go from an uncle to a niece. And that all the other family subdivision requirements still are applicable, like the notarized document for family subdivision. Procedurally, just need to approve, deny, or table the request.
All right, anything for Aaron? Did you draw the short straw today?
It just happened that way.
Everyone else was at home watching Everybody Loves Raymond. All right, we'll open the floor to public comment, anyone, well, would the petitioner like to? I mean, I don't know that you.
I'm not the petitioner, I'm Tom Brooke, I represent.
Yes.
And I think this is within purview of the act, just the definition. This family land is the grandmother of Kimberly, the owner. Marty is the brother. Actually, Kimberly's father's deceased.
Thank you for being here. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this? All right, if not, then do we have a motion to approve FSW 02-24?
I move.
All in favor, say aye, aye? Try to make it easy. Good? All right, we have some board appointments, I'll group some of these. First one is ABC Board, Maurice Hendrick, or affectionately referred to as Marny.
Just for our secretary, our board clerk, Sarah, it's Marny, M-A-R-N-Y.
Applied for reappointment, the county seat, the ABC Board, motion to approve, Marny?
I move.
In a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Airport Advisory Board, Bill Lucy and John Muth have applied for reappointment to the Airport Advisory Board, motion to approve those two?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Kannapolis, City of Kannapolis Planning, Michael McLean applied for the ETJ seat, motion to approve, Michael?
I move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Danger, aye, Dangerous Dog Appeals Board, Jenny Salyers applied for reappointment, motion to approve Jenny Salyers?
I move.
Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. East Gold Hill Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners Board, Charlie Ashby and Cletus Oliver submitted applications for county seat on that board, motion in a second to approve.
I move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, aye? Granite Quarry Zoning Board, is that Graylow or Greg Low? I think that's Greg Low, applied for reappointment, motion to approve Greg?
I move.
All in favor, say aye, aye? Home Healthcare Block Grant Advisory Committee, Micah Ennis, Social Services Director, for a funder seat. Cindy Fink, Meals on Wheels, a funder seat. Beth Huber, Trinity Living Center, a funder seat. Valerie Steele, Airport and Transit Director, a funder seat. Motion to approve those four?
I move, second.
Aye? JCPC, Carol Halt, applied for reappointment from the superintendent seat, Don Bringle. Check the felony box on that.
All the warrants are now.
Applied for reappointment Parks and Rec, Jenny Lee, applied for reappointment a nonprofit agency seat, John Basinger, applied for reappointment for attorney seat, and five general public seats, Jason Henson, Sarah Rodriguez, Todd Wirick, Alyssa Russell, and Christian Wilson. Do we have a motion to approve all of them?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye? Library Board, Lauren Harry, Laurel Harry, applied for the library board and at-large seat, motion to approve Laurel?
I move.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Lock Volunteer Fire Department, Arnold Lynn Aldridge, applied for reappointment, motion to approve Arnold?
I move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye? Rowan Transit System Advisory Board, Jordan Delaney, applied for appointment for an at-large seat, motion in a second?
I move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Last but not, aye, last but not least, the king of Michigan football. From Worcester. The young, the young man from Worcester. Rod Kreider, applied for appointment, at-large seat on Rowan Cabarrus Community College Board of Trustees. We also received a recommendation and request from the president of Rowan Cabarrus Community College. So motion in a second for Rowan.
Moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And that's all we have, is that, oh, we've got financial reports, yeah, go ahead.
All right, so for through June, and we're still closing out things, so this is just through June 30th, and then we'll have some more entries that'll happen, but our cumulative expenditures were up 20 million over last year, which is 12.9%. Still well within budget. Our June revenues were up 4.6 million, which is 2.4%. Still well within, I mean, you know, higher than last year, of course, and still more than where our expenditures were at. So we're still in good shape there. Property taxes for May, this is through May, were up 19.3 million or 20.78%. And then cumulative sales tax were slightly down, 1.4 million. And I'll have some explanations to some of that here in just a minute, but still trending within where we should be budget-wise, so, so we're okay there. Monthly sales tax for the month was down right at $2 million, which is 34.05%. And that's due to that hold harmless payment not coming in, so that's where that. So that's where that drop is. And then Erin's got some more slides. I was going to try to explain this hold harmless. So yeah, next slide. So when the state, the way the state used to pay the Medicaid cost, you know, it's split between the state, the federal and the state, and that's still the case, in North Carolina, counties were required to pay 15% of that share. But the cities didn't pay anything, so this is pre this hold harmless happening. And so this was, you know, just, it was harder on rural and poorer counties to pay that 15%. So, you know, the Medicaid relief came into effect, so next slide. So what that did was the state assumed all that Medicaid cost, but to do that, they took away the Article 44 tax from the counties, which also took some from the cities. So that's...
For Medicaid-related?
Um, now that I do not have an answer for, but I can find out. I don't think so, though. It was just a sales tax. Um, so by doing this, it created a city hold harmless amount and a county hold harmless amount that the state was withholding. So most counties would be losing money from the Medicaid swap anyway, so this hold harmless payment was a way to help bridge that gap. Next slide. So Article 44 was distributed 50% per capita, 50% per point of sale, and so the cities had the same distribution. So when we get our sales tax from the state, we get a county amount, and then we see what each one of our cities is also getting. And so we can see how much hold harmless they're holding for each city from that sales tax report. For the whole state, counties paid nearly $317 million in this city hold harmless, because it was split 50-50 in 22-23. So next slide. So what they realized was that some counties were better off to just pay that 15% Medicaid, and some counties were better off receiving the sales tax. So as a compromise, the state said, okay, well, if you would have been better off to just pay, then we'll get you back to zero. And so that's what happened to us the last couple of years, and the next slide's going to show that. But the counties, so counties received this hold harmless payment as a way to make up that gap. So next slide. So here's what our Medicaid costs look like compared to our sales tax. So the sales tax is the line that's running through the blue line, and the Medicaid is the green shaded area. So from 2010 to 2024, you can see, well, I guess 22 is when our Medicaid costs started going up. So around 2020, we were benefiting from the sales tax swap. That's what this is showing us. But in 2020 is when we kind of crossed over to where our sales tax was greater than what we owed. And so that's why we started getting that hold harmless payment. What's happened in '24 is it's now crossing back. Our Medicaid payment that we owe is now more than the sales tax that we're receiving, so we're going to benefit from that swap again. And not, but we won't be getting that revenue as a payment in March, which is what caused that spike in the graph. The last slide shows... Go ahead. Go back one, please.
If you look at the chart and you go back to the, another chart of ours, it kind of, it flips right around the COVID when sales tax starts going crazy. So that's one reason you didn't. But if you look at our chart, you can't really see anything. It goes back over, and the sales tax ain't going crazy like it...
Right.
And if you... Then understand it. Because I'm not sure that the Department of Revenue understands it, and I don't understand how they're calculating.
Yeah, so I think then...
Other than, they'll tell you how they're doing it.
Right.
All the counties are, most all of them are losing this year, and they claim it's not from the Medicaid expansion.
Right, yeah, they say it's not, yes. So the next slide kind of shows how they calculate these numbers. So this first column on this slide is the Article 44 taxes that we would have received had we been getting the sales tax, plus the city hold harmless that they were keeping from the cities for that same Article 44. Then there's...
This is specific Rowan County?
This is specific Rowan County, yes.
From 2010 to '24.
And '24 is just through March of '24, I believe, because we didn't have the reports for April, May, and June yet. So '24 is not a full year yet, because sales tax lags behind, because the state has to do all these spreadsheets, yeah. So the state Medicaid expenses, that's what we owed the state for our Medicaid. That's the 15%. So as you can see, and you go across, in '23, that 2.2 million, in the next to the last column, is where we got that big refund in March. Well, actually, it's, yeah, that's the March payment. And they do a correction in August, so if they overpay you, they're going to take some more back. But as you can see, in '24, we only got $9,000. So we didn't, so all those years that, before it crossed over, you could see that we didn't get anything. So we were benefiting from this formula. It wasn't until FY '21 that we started receiving some money from the state, because our sales tax went up.
Sales tax went down, and Medicaid rolls have exploded.
Yeah.
Which we still don't understand. Outside of, well, it's one of two things. You've either got, well, we talk about this in budget every year. One said earlier, if you want to have a job in Rowan County today, and a good job.
Right.
A really good, we're not, these aren't minimum wage, these are career-level jobs, benefits, retirement, all of that. So we don't know why Medicaid is exploding if it's not, unless it's expansion.
Yeah, and some of the things that was explained to me, though, was that, I think, for a little while, they kind of held Medicaid where it was at because of COVID. Is that... And so I think that, you know, you're seeing some of both things kind of happening at the same time, which makes it look like the expansion's part of it, but the state keeps telling me and all the things that it's not.
It really hasn't come through the system yet.
Right, yes, they've just started processing those.
But we are, what, a tier-two county, is that correct, Mr. Chairman? And that is why we have so many people from our county that are signing up and qualifying for Medicaid now, and they aren't getting health insurance from their employers. These are working people, and they're working poor, and we are still a majority poor county.
So one thing that, you know, this $2 million, its best projections, we accounted for that in our budget projections for next year. So we weren't expecting to get this money next year or in '25, because we knew that that was a possibility. So it's not like we've been, we were budgeting to get this $2 million, so I think that's going to be okay. I think, you know, still, the big question mark is how sales tax is going to hold up. And, you know, and that's just still an unknown, yeah.
Everybody's...
Right, right.
This is typical in this type of election cycle, has a lot to do with that, so.
So that's...
Well, thank you for doing this, because I know we were talking about it, and it was very confusing. You guys said, hey, well, we'll do a mini seminar on it. So I'm not sure if we see it in front of us and we understand the mechanics of how it works. I'm not sure that we understand why it works, but anyway. All right, anything else for the good of the cause?
Make a motion that we adjourn, sir.
Should we call Mr. Pierce and ask him to adjourn us? All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.